I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any citizen comments, Kate?
No.
Okay. We could do the spotlight on that one.
Lots of good things to show tonight.
Thanks everyone for giving me a couple of minutes again to share good news with you. Sticking with our format to kind of go through the big buckets in our strategic plan. So our first section is student success. So our first image up here, we've got a collage of middle and high school students also. McGrath and Mark Twain action happening because Brentwood School District ranked in the top three percent of public schools in Missouri according to the 2025 K through 12 niche public school and district rankings. So no E C C in that one, but just because it's K-12. So Niche is a website that analyzes public school data and reviews to produce comprehensive rankings, school, or report cards and profiles for schools, universities, and neighborhoods. If you remember back in what is 2024, but 2023, this was the same publication that ranked the city of Brentwood as the number one place to live in Missouri. So not the end-all, be-all of everything that we're shooting for, but a nice little feather in our cap to be recognized by a big publication as one of the premier school districts in Missouri. But to just add on to that a little bit, one area to note, Brentwood Middle School ranked fourth out of 542 schools for best public middle schools in Missouri and second of 440 for best public middle school teachers in Missouri. Don't ask me why it's 542 and 440 for those, but like we said, it's not perfect. It's their rankings that get mixed up or get compiled, but still a nice little feather in the cap, especially for the middle school to be up there. All right, our second image. All right, this is Brentwood High School senior Nathaniel Aya, and he has been recognized as a commended student in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. This honor places him in the top three percent of more than 1.3 million students who entered the program by taking the PSAT, Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test in the fall of 2023. So about this time last year, took this exam, did really well on it. So he's a National Merit Commended Student. After graduation, he's going to attend Bradley University in Peoria, Illinois and study game design and develop. So very cool, very nice young man. So also the son of Assistant Principal of the high school. All right, this is another cool one. Like, what is this, right? This is artwork created by Brentwood High School junior Lizzie Butler, and she has been named one of 20 finalists in the 2024 Sketch for Survival Junior Competition. This international competition included more than 6,000 entries from 94 different nations. So this is like an international thing. So and Lizzie was one of five representing the United States. So there were from the United Kingdom, South Korea, China, all over the place, out of over 5,000, 6,000 to be selected as a finalist in the top 20 toward this piece of art. So very cool, just to be named a finalist, but this fall, that piece of artwork will be showcased alongside prestigious artists in the On the Edge exhibit with stops in Edinburgh, Scotland, and London, England. So and it's for sale. So people can buy it, they can see it. And if you want to go onto our district Facebook page, there's a post about this. There's a link to vote for the People's Choice Award. So you can only vote one time, so we can't just like stack the deck to help her win. But everyone that sees it, everyone that's watching this, please go cast your vote and, you know, let's try and get Lizzie the People's Choice Award too, in addition to this. All right, so our next bucket, school culture. And these are a couple elementary ones that are just very cool, positive, building positive school culture stories. So our first one, Mark Twain Elementary School, student on the left, kindergartner, student on the right, fifth grader. So Mark Twain Kindergarteners were recently paired with fifth grade buddies to celebrate finishing their first reading unit. Our kindergartners shared the books that they could read with their fifth grade buddies, and then our fifth graders shared their favorite stories with their kindergarten counterparts. So there was a lot of cool pictures to pick from, but I picked this one because Harry the Dirty Dog is one of my favorites to read with my kids. And the picture is cute, obviously, but Harry the Dirty Dog is a great story. And then over to McGrath Elementary School. McGrath held its first Eagle Excellence Assembly of the 2024-25 school year last week, so just last Friday, recognizing individual students for their growth, hard work, and accomplishment across a variety of subjects, including reading, writing, math, and character development. So in addition to the individual student awards, they also recognized a class as a whole. So Lindsay Piazza's third grade class was honored for, or received and honored with the prestigious Eagle Seal of Excellence, and it's a flag that they can display in their room for that month for consistently following the school's core values, showing respect, acting responsibly, and being safe and peaceful. So just another example of building positive school culture in our elementary schools, both at Mark Twain and McGrath. And then for community engagement, our first one. And then sometimes these are tricky because they fit in a lot of different categories. This one specifically, this was last Friday as well. This was Brentwood Middle School Career Day, the Third Annual Brentwood Middle School Career Day. So that's Chief Cottrell from the Brentwood Fire Department speaking with a student about a very fancy piece of equipment, a very fancy drone. I was taking a photo, but also listening intentionally because it is very cool with infrared technology and all this crazy stuff, but very cool. So from mechanical engineers to healthcare professionals, this event offered students a firsthand look at how the skills they're learning in the classroom can transfer over and be applied in the real world. And I can say that this, these speakers, these professionals had an impact on our students, and you could see it in their faces and in the questions that they asked and things like that. But I want to read to you just a couple things. The organizers of the event, Anne Bashi and Natalie Sellers, ask the kids if you want to, write a thank you note to your presenters or to anybody that you spoke with. So instead of just saying, this was a great event, that had an impact, or just read to you a couple of these things, because this really hammers at home. So, "Thank you for sharing knowledge about being a neuroscientist. It inspired me to want to learn more about the brain and other body parts." So, "Thank you for teaching me about robotics. I will try it in the future as a job." Thank you for also answering all my questions. Thank you because I really think that mechanical engineering might be my thing. And then the last one, "Thank you for coming and telling me about South Tech. I think it's really cool and I want to go there when I'm in high school." And that was, those were just a handful of the folks that were there, including me. I did a couple sessions, it was really fun.
He brought cool toys too.
Not that cool, but I showed all my cool stuff too. But the kids were, you know, like, my wife is a middle school teacher in a different district, and I hear a lot of stories, especially about middle school kids, and our middle school kids are fantastic. I mean, just polite and open doors for people and saying hello. And I'm like, they actually spoke to me and they opened for me when I was scared of all this stuff. Because I don't know that that necessarily happens, or I'm sure it does, but as a whole, but our middle school kids are just fantastic. All right, and then our last one is a collage. So Brentwood High School turned the first home football game of the season into a community-wide celebration. Everybody was involved. The middle school football program led the players and the team out onto the field. We had our many cheerleaders teamed up with our cheerleading squad to help keep the crowd energized. And then also, of course, our jazz band is always there doing their thing, and they're fantastic. The afternoon also featured special tributes to Brentwood High School football history, including a heartfelt memorial to honor the life and legacy of Coach Bob Penn. He had all of his family and wife and kids and grandkids and everybody at halftime there to just speak a little bit about his impact in the Brentwood community. And then in the bottom right there, members of the 2009 state runner-up football team that got back together just to celebrate that 15th year anniversary. We've had other great sporting events, just had homecoming, it was fantastic, had senior night volleyball last night, got a great win. So lots of, not just in our closed bubble, but trying to make bigger, more community event type things, how can we get more people involved? All right, any questions? That's it.
Now, this is a great way to start board meetings.
Well, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, Kate, if we can do real call, please.
Here.
Ryan Dawson.
Ryan Flynn.
Here.
Keith Regenberg.
Here.
Katie Spall.
Lindsay Spencer.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved and brings us into the superintendent's report.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the school board candidate filing option. Bringing this to you for a couple different reasons. Starting last, I think it was last year, this became an option, and there were about three school districts in the area that took the board, St. Louis County Board of Elections up on their offer to run the board, to get run the filing for the candidate filing. One of the main reasons districts were looking at it was because of when the filing dates were closing, so last year it was closing on Christmas Eve, which meant somebody had to be there until 5:00. And so a few districts decided to go to Board of Elections. They had success, so we found that a lot of districts started looking into it, and so we had about 12 districts that are either looking into it or have already decided in the St. Louis County area. And then at MSBA at the Fall Conference, they brought it up again because this year's filing date closes on New Year's Eve, which means again with the requirements that we have to be open until 5:00. We get to be flexible with our hours, but you have to be open until 5:00 on that last filing date. So we really just wanted to bring it up to the board. Kate is wonderful and is more than willing to continue to host here in Brentwood. And we have linked the hours and shared that before, the hours of operation, if we would stay here at Brentwood School District and continue doing it the way we've always done it. But we wanted to at least engage in the conversation and allow the board the opportunity to decide if you would want to move to having the St. Louis County Board of Elections host the election, uh, candidate filing. They are open every day from eight to five?
I think it's 4:30.
4:30, except for the last day. Sorry, I had it written down. Except for Christmas Day, they are closed. And then you have to drive to St. Anne to file if you would go there. So there's some more hours of operation, but it's a further drive. I will say, since Kate does not mind being here, we don't have a real big stance on it either way, this really affects the board, but we did want to at least let the board know that this is an option, because as I said, many of the St. Louis County are at a point where there are more St. Louis County school districts using the Board of Elections than not using the Board of Elections. But that does not mean it's right for Brentwood, we're our own community and we get to decide. We do have, if we choose to go down this route, we would have to modify one of our policies that just outlines the process for candidate filing. To that, yeah.
Oh, just a couple other things. If we also did that, we, yeah, one of our policies would change, and then one of our procedures would change, and then there's eight forms that we have that candidates, and those would all go away. And then if in the future we decide to go back, like if we only manage to run a election or three years, whatever we want to do, we have to pick a time and put that in our do list. But then whenever we go back, then we have to re-institute the policies and the procedures and things the way they are going to be when that time comes.
What are the eight forms that we have that we would?
I didn't bring the list down, but it's like, you know, your name, your address. One or two things have to be notarized on things, or just documents that we keep, some things have to be filed with the county. It's the same ones we use every year.
We would just use the common ones, so the town, whatever we would expect would be the ones that we'd use. So this is just something we wanted to bring to your attention and have a discussion about. And if we choose to stay in Brentwood, we choose to stay in Brentwood, and then none of the other things on the listed list need to be discussed. If we choose to move to the Board of St. Louis County, then we would need to discuss some of the other items like the policy and the particular.
There was a suspicion when the law was changed a few years ago to mess with these filing dates, that there were people trying to figure out ways to make it harder to sign up or something. That's why they had, you know, end on Christmas Eve and that kind of nonsense. And so I guess I tend to think that eventually some sense will prevail and they'll go back to the way it used to be. But for now, I would be in favor of making this change because it takes that, it takes the problem off of us. You know, if something happens and somebody can't show up on New Year's Eve or something like that, we get in trouble because nobody's there or something like that. This makes it less vulnerable to that kind of nonsense, I think. But I think hopefully it'll get changed back if people are too long.
What do you mean by get changed back?
The filing date was for, what was it, five weeks, starting sometime in December and then mid-January, you know? And so this change, they changed the law to try and make it a shorter period of time just to mess with, you know, I'm not sure exactly what people are trying to accomplish with it, but it was, it was to make it a problem for schools to sign up. And that has not been a big problem for us, but it's a pain, and you have to accommodate it in an unusual way. And so this relieves us, relieves us of that, and I would hope that, you know, everybody's, well, maybe, you know, everybody's, I think there will be a, I would tend to think that there'd be a lot of people in favor of it. Come on, let's go back to the way it used to be, it made so much sense that way, but it'll probably take a couple of years, but.
So the benefit, as I'm hearing it, the only benefit is, is that we have somebody that is definitely going to be there on the 31st?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you know, we have the reliability to do that, you know, if it's bad weather or something like that. And, you know, we're kind of got a one point, it seems to me we have one point of error in the county, you know, it's.
True.
And so I guess I'd be inclined to make the change.
Is there a cost associated with it?
No, we reached out to double check and make sure there's no, there's no cost. It doesn't cost the district any additional fees if only, you know, if we only, this upcoming election, there's two, two people up. If only two people file, we don't have to run it, and we don't have to pay for any of those things that are typically, that are normal. The other thing is that we can set the amount of years, like, so this year we know it's December 31st. If, you can do this every year. So like, if we choose this year, Kate's got a schedule, she's fine with it, and we choose to stay with Brentwood, next year when we know we can bring it earlier, like, you can sign up yearly, or you can say we want to do it forever until we decide not to. That, the kind of MOU type document that they've put together, we have to put a kind of an end date, but we can do it, you know, one year, and if we don't like it, or we can wait a year and do it again, like, this is, these are, those are the options kind of on the table.
I personally appreciate the fact that you're willing to do it again. I think we have such a hard time getting people to run for this board to begin with, and I think if we just complicate it and they have to go to St. Anne, that that's going to be something that people aren't going to do. I think it's convenient, and I think keeping it in-house, in my opinion, is better. That's my opinion.
Is there a hybrid? I thought I read something.
No, we looked into it. We asked if we do both. It's a one or another. Yeah, we asked if, like, okay, great, then, you know, we'll do it up until winter break.
Which would be great.
Which would be great, but no. So it's, they either host or we have to host, so it's one or the other. We did look into that as well.
So is there anything else within the city of Brentwood that we would, that we'd go to outside of the city of Brentwood for?
Not, I mean, for the school district.
So like, you know, not, not just for the school district, I guess, is a kind of bigger, like, the aldermen, do they go through the same process, or is this all here within cities?
I think it's different. I don't know what, what rules their system, but it's a different law.
They do go to St. Louis County?
That's what I was thinking too, but I don't know for sure. I did look, it's a 20-minute drive, so it's not terribly far. I thought kind of the same thing, Carrie, that you were saying, but then my hesitation too is if you're not willing to drive 20 minutes to sign up for the board, I don't want that, you know?
Right, but then what if the weather is bad and you have a 20-minute drive? You could.
It's true.
You know, I mean, I just, I don't know. I just think this is such an important position, and, I don't know, I just, I'm more for keeping it in the community versus, so many things are being outsourced, and so many things are being made more complicated in our lives, and I don't care for that as much. I'm one of these keep it simple stupid, but that's just me.
I think it's a lot more approachable by having it here in Brentwood, and if we look over the course of the last several years, the decisions that we've made, it's never been about centralizing and outsourcing things. You know, we have, you know, two elementary schools, we have a library that's going to be built here, we have everything within Brentwood, so I'm kind of with you. I personally really appreciated the first time that I was up and went in and spoke to Kate, that was very, very helpful for somebody new coming in considering running for the board, as opposed to just going to an office where you have no idea who the heck anybody is, you don't have that opportunity to ask those questions. I think that's, being that from an approachable standpoint, I would, that's why I would lean more towards being in Brentwood.
That's a good point.
Have we spoken with any, because I saw some of the other districts, there seemed to be positive feedback, but there wasn't too much detail?
No, there wasn't. The ones, again, it was only three districts that have done it. There are many more that are moving forward after this year, for this year's. They just said it was a smooth and easy process because they think it was not on that. No, I have, they, I do not know what the board members here to go through that process, that that would be an interesting conversation, maybe a good one to kids.
And if we did it this year, and then we went back, is it more of a headache to, for you to then go back, Kate? And?
I don't think so. You never know next year what the state is going to change the schedule to, so you might prove it, again, make it earlier or later.
And we can take it year by year. I mean, if, like, that's another option, you know, we can always look at it year by year. If this year we've got a schedule that works, then next year, bring it again depending on the schedule. This is, I don't have advice because it's really, it's a new thing. I didn't, I wanted to at least put it on the table, agree to have discussion, but.
Well, I do, I, Carrie, I agree that, you know, it's, it's most convenient for people here to just go over there and to see Kate and sign up. This does make it less convenient, but, you know, if you, if you're going to do it, you know, it's a little bit longer drive, but it's an event, you go over, go to the central officer, you go to St. Anne, it may make a big difference. So I don't have strong feelings about this, if the sentiment is leave it alone.
Yeah, because I.
And Kate, thank you for being with me.
That's what I said to her, I was like, thank you. This is really, it's a huge, huge.
The worst thing that can happen is that for some reason, something falls down and nobody's there on the last day, and then somebody shows up and then makes a big stink out of it, and I guess we really don't have to worry too much about that happening. And so maybe, maybe I'm talking myself out of it. The big change is to prevent that one kind of unlikely bad event, you know, there.
And we will have half the count, it'll be over half the county this year if we wait, and a lot more feedback.
Yeah, the only, the biggest inconvenience is that Kate has to be here until 5:00 on the 31st, so.
Is that something, Kate, that you're comfortable with doing?
I have to do that because, you know, you can set your time as long as you're here by 5:00, you don't have to be here all day. It's like, it's on my schedule, I'm just going to be there in the afternoon.
Yeah, like you did, I think it was like, we gave a timeframe from like 2:00 to 5:00, or 1:00 to 5:00, or whatever.
Yeah, I thought it was very helpful when I was a write-in, that you helped me so much answering questions, I would be afraid that had you not have been there, and I was going to the board, like Ryan's saying, I mean, it, so I think I'm a paper-keeping in here right now.
You know, whereas here, it's.
Well, yeah, you don't know who to ask questions to, or, and how would we know who's running? I mean, are we going to know?
And on the 31st, they may not be as.
Don't give us a, well, I think they give it to you on a pretty regular basis of who's.
Okay, so they let you know.
So should we take a vote, or what should we do?
I think it's, it's a conversation.
Yeah, just, it's a conversation. The only time we would have to vote is if we wanted to do the actual, we wanted to change it, but it feels-
Kate, did you have anything else you wanted to add into this or?
No, I, no.
Well, I think we'll kind of, it sounds like we'll stay with our current plan and we'll bring you treats on the 31st.
We will.
Don't worry, we'll have lots of-
There are many super exciting New Year's plans in the Zelinski household, so we're coming.
You may have lots of people. The chances of someone coming to file that day are still probably pretty low. I do, I would say, if anyone's watching, file early if they're going to the board.
And let's hope that we can go back to sanity or deadlines or-
There you go. There's some champagne, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks for the conversation.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, the next up, we have the 25, 20, 2025, 2026 school year calendar. Dr. Miller's going to come present it. I think it was actually presented in the spring, perhaps, we just moved it to the previous.
So in the spring, we presented the 24, 25. We didn't want to give you both of them at the same time because it starts getting confusing as you ask questions. So this calendar mirrors the one that we did for the 24, 25 year almost exactly. There was a few days that our committee, you know, had to make decisions on based on the calendar of like, when do we want the comp day? This year it fell conveniently the day after Halloween, not as convenient for 25, 26. But the calendar is very, very similar to the calendar that is currently in place. Same number of instructional days, same number of staff contact days, same number of hours. When we were creating this, we were working not just with our committee, but looking at all the calendars around us. And there's just some of the highlights and so I know there was a lot of time and thought into each individual day and what we thought would be best for parents, for teachers, for our students, and this is what we settled on. So are there any questions?
Should we?
Let's start with a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the 25, 26 school year calendar as outlined.
Second discussion. Andrew, we did something a little different with conferences. This year, what did we do, remind me, and then has that changed for the next year?
So this year, based on feedback, what we did with conferences is for the fall conferences, we have two weeks of conferences. So it's spread out where like teachers come one week and then they come the next week to kind of give them a break. In the spring, those conferences are held over one week. So teachers choose to stay like Tuesday night and Wednesday night, just to try to get them done because the spring conferences are, not that they're not well attended, but by then the parent knows the teacher and the amount of time, you know, necessary. And so teachers were like, well, we don't need two full weeks for conferences even though we have the same lot, amount of allotted time. So this calendar is the same as the one that we adopted where in the fall, there's only one week of conferences. So the time for conferences isn't changed, like you still have two nights, but it's just basically like, it's all takes place within one week, where now it takes place over two full weeks.
A lot of those too, you go into spring break with the spring conferences, so you know, when you're asking teachers to wait significantly later.
So, I must have slept because I never remember doing this calendar. I thought we only did one, we were coming back to do this one after we were going to see how the two conferences worked out. Because in the spring, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of them are student-led. So are we going to be able to get all those students in in three days and in one week? And then what's the backup plan for parents if that week isn't working for them? There's no, there's no other way.
So it's the same amount of like time, so like students either way, like there's still eight hours of conferences. The backup plan is the same as it is now, like if there's a parent who can't make it, our teachers try to be flexible, they try to work at different hours. Like if a parent is out of town that week, the expectation is still that teachers meet. We've worked with teachers in the past where we actually pay them like a little extra, EPED, extra pay, extra duty for if they have a large case load of students or they're like working extra hours to accommodate one of those conferences.
I think the, the reality is two, a couple of things. One, you can, two Wednesdays may not work for a family just as much as one shortened week may not work for a family. So to your point, Carrie, I think it's good to have a calendar out early with the days off, with those pieces. If after our spring conferences, we need to come in and say, whoo, that didn't work at all, we need an extra week, it's easy to bring a revision to this calendar that we're going to stretch like those dates over because of the feedback or because of what we found out. That's very easy because you're not changing, families can plan because they have a calendar out earlier of the days off, the big, the big things. Like first day of school, last day of school, winter breaks, all of those pieces. Typically, we try to get those out as early as possible for families to be able to do those kind of planning, but that doesn't mean you can't. As somebody who was in charge of the calendar in their previous role for many, many years, we brought lots of revisions as we learned things. But minor things like that could be revised too if we would need to, if for some reason we see that it falls apart. But I think for spring, we'll probably be okay.
And one thing that I, I guess I'm just kind of curious about, what about summer school? I don't see that on the calendar. Do we have like official start and end dates for summer school with the various?
You know, we don't yet, did we, Dr.? No, not quite yet. Last year, we started it kind of after the Thanksgiving, but I, I don't know when the plan is. But yeah, the sooner we can get that out, I think was the better. And that was some of the feedback that was given last time because it would help us hire teachers earlier, get everything settled early. So this year, the hope, last year, we didn't start until actually after winter break.
To decide when the winter starts.
Ideally, we would start hopefully in between, you know, Thanksgiving and our winter break to start setting the days, looking at the hours, the conflicts with sweat time, getting that communicated now.
And then as far as athletic department, like I know there's always a half day before the homecoming dance and all that stuff. Do we have the next year's football schedule already set in stone? Because I don't think we had that yet until like January.
We have high school teachers on the committee, but we did not.
I'm sure we don't have sports events quite that far in advance. I, I'll be honest, I've never had a schedule made around, a school calendar made around homecoming and things like that. So if that's on this calendar, um-
And I'm not saying we should, but I just, I don't, I'm kind of concerned about approving this right now because I feel like it's usually in January and I think there's still a lot of stuff to, to still kind of put in. I don't know, I, I guess I just don't remember doing this.
So I would say, several school districts I've noticed have like two years of their school calendars.
We used to do two years, but this year we didn't because you were new to the process and-
So we, we did come back after the last board meeting, get feedback and have another meeting where we sat down and did all this. I think you have a sport event and we're able to be there.
I don't remember ever coming there.
Yeah, so, but yes, that's what we sat down and had, the whole committee and everybody there looking at this because every year, we've adopted two to try to give families as much of a heads up as possible. Because we've even like, other districts are even giving three years, just so people can plan to start and end their holidays.
So will we go forward when you guys do the calendar in January and go to two years at that time?
So I think so, before me and previously, they would do two years at a time. And when we met this last spring, we adopted like basically like two calendars, one that we brought earlier and then this is the second one. And then traditionally, they would wait for the full year and then they would adopt two year, two calendars again. We, based on feedback, we're thinking about changing the model, and Dr. Zelinski talked about this last week, where we would actually look at approving a calendar for 26, 27 this coming spring to try to give parents always, you always have. Because last year, we were very late in kind of getting our calendar approved. Like every other district had a 24, 25 calendar approved before we did. So, and, and like Dr. Zelinski said, if we need to, and in my previous district as well, if we need to revise something, you bring it back and say, hey, we approved this calendar. Based on feedback, we actually want to put in a fall break and change the calendar. Because of snow days, we changed the calendar. But then there's other things that you ideally don't want to change because people are planning spring break vacations and June vacations.
I guess that, that was my thing about, you know, for, you know, in the summertime, for summer school, whether that's in high school or middle school or elementary, and we talk a lot about elementary, but high school also has summer school and so as parents are planning their vacation times, having a true yearly calendar, I think makes a lot of sense, especially if we're going to go out that, that far.
And I think we can do that, I don't, I don't think that'll be a problem.
It just needs to say like, hey, we're starting, we, our plan is to start here, next plan is to end on this date. Just very simplistic, not all the nitty-gritty details about the timing and things of that nature.
Yeah, I think we can easily add that, that, that I don't think is an issue at all. And I think the AMI conversation, which will, after we decide what to do with this, because I think that's the other thing, knowing when your last day of school is, how to inform where your, because every district I've been in has been that kind of, you give them a week after Memorial Day and then you start, like I could assume that we're probably going to start June first. But having that on the calendar, but that, having that on the calendar is something we can easily add, not moving forward. This year will be a little different, but we can have that added without a problem.
So if it's approved, then are we starting to print calendars, are we starting to communicate? I guess that, that is another question I have, what, why are, why are we approving it today?
So once we approve it, we would just put it on the website so parents could look at the 24, 25 calendar and the 25, 26 calendar, just to have an idea like, oh, does school still get out before Memorial Day? Or when is my spring break?
And then like we said, we would do kind of a rolling in the spring, so you'd almost always be like a two-year ahead.
So then everybody start doing one calendar a year.
We're not, we're not, we're not really spending money to print these calendars off.
No. That doesn't happen, that doesn't happen.
That doesn't happen.
So right before that year.
So we can add those other things on before that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not, yeah.
Right, any other questions about the calendar? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
So the next part, I did put in the weekend update, but I did want to just bring it up here to get any feedback around the AMI days. I understand that it's been a practice in our district to try to do AMI days on snow days to make up attendance hours from the, for every snow day. And I would like to propose that we take a look at not doing AMI days for the first two snow days. Having lived the calendar world for a very long time, I got to know all of the ins and outs of the requirements of the state of Missouri. We are actually required by law to incorporate 36 inclement weather hours into our calendar on top of the 1044 that we're required to go. So we're required to technically build a calendar that has 1,080 hours. Our calendars have, let's see, the high school has 1,096, middle school 1,099, and high school has 1,135 hours. So as you can tell, we far exceed the expectation of the state. And I will tell you that I do have a, just because you can do something doesn't necessarily always mean you should do something. And I will say that AMI days put a lot of stress on families, on teachers, to come up with something that, I'll be really honest, I don't know if we get a whole lot of bang for our buck putting first graders who at this point have never learned virtually on a computer instead of going out and playing in the snow while teachers are trying to throw something together at the last minute because we didn't know the snowstorm was going to hit. Maybe at a grandparent's house or somebody else's house while parents are trying to work because not everybody, my friends like to remind me regularly that not everybody gets snow days in the, the business world. So because of all of those reasons, again, I, I don't believe we get all that much bang for our buck. It is a checkbox that allows us to count those days, but we don't, the amount of learning is minimal if any. It causes, again, I think undue stress and I, I do believe that there is some joy in being a child and letting kids get that excitement of the snow, snow day phone call or finding out later in the day while they're still on their jammies. Adults like that too. I would like to propose that we get two snow days that are traditional snow days and then we can revisit on the third snow day, should we have one. That would again, still keep us about the 1,080 that is required, or again, we spark seed that anyway. And then not worry about changing the end of our school year. Those are inclement weather days, we're required by law to build them in anyway. So we would stick with our last day of school, families don't have to worry of, oh, this was a snow day. Are we going after Memorial Day, are we not? Nobody needs to worry about changing into the school year. And then on that third day, we can, you know, if it gives us enough warning and we can get computers home, sure. I will say that, and I know I put this in the weekend update as well, is this is a practice of most of our neighboring districts. I know for sure, Ladue, Clayton, Parkway, Lindbergh, Kirkwood, and Webster Grove follow this kind of model with having, you know, some of them have three, some actually will never use an AMI day, they have a pretty bad taste in their mouth about them. So because they have enough hours built in, their plan is unless we have a catastrophic snow event of 10 or more days, they're not going to use them at all. But, so I just wanted to put that out. Again, I know it was in the weekend update, but if there are questions or concerns about that practice, but I would like to, we're going to start writing our communications out about inclement weather in November. And just wanted to make sure, full support of the board as we move in. We never voted on this in Ladue, so I, I didn't think it was something that needed to be voted on, but just how we report to Desi our, our days and we'll make sure we're on the same page.
I think it's a great idea. We had a lot of negative feedback last year. And I, I believe the same for you. I think, you know, we have to let kids be kids and I agree, I don't think there's a lot of learning done on those days. And also let our teachers have time and our administration will never have time with their kids as well. You know, I just think we've lost a little bit of that and I think we need to get it back.
I'm in favor of it, for sure. I'd like to see more than just two snow days.
I, I was starting small. I was starting small, I think three, four.
If other schools did, because I, I mean, both of my boys, you know, if it snows outside, I mean, they're ready to, to go and it's just a stressful day all around, at least in our household. So a snow day is, it's not productive and the stress that it puts on everybody, families, teachers, everything. I just, I would prefer to have snow days be snow days.
I would be a-okay with three if we want to bump it up to, and we'd be, and with anybody that has limits. Like I said, it still keeps us in, I don't, my experience in St. Louis County over the last 15 years is three or, three's a pretty happy spot, we don't usually get more than three.
Yeah, I was going to say, what was last, how many did we have last year?
I think it was two.
There was one, there was two back to back.
It was both on, like, on President's Day.
We didn't get the computers out, so they ended up being-
I think we had four total and we talked about if we were going to forgive the one or not. We had to talk about two, or we had to.
Because one would have, if you didn't forgive one, it would have, if you didn't forgive at least one of the days, I was at the working day, you'd have to go to the Tuesday after Memorial Day. And I'd like to really simplify that all and just, it's a snow day, it's a snow day, as long as we're going the required number of minutes by Desi. If the board is okay with that, then we're good and we're going to keep with the calendar that we have.
When, when did, how many days do we start getting into, you know, compliant, like four?
I'd have to just-
Well, I can't, I can't see the math.
And you can't call me out on that, Mr. Zelinski. It would be, I mean, in Ladue, we had similar hours and I would say it was nine before we would get close to compliance. And again, we don't want to go the bare minimum, I never, you know, I wouldn't be there about that. There is a point where there's an impact on learning if we lose two full weeks of school. But again, in, in our experience in St. Louis and without having, you know, buses and being a smaller district, we do have teachers that live all around though. I will say that, you know, St. Louis County area superintendents meet at 4:30 in the afternoon the day before a weather event may come and then four o'clock in the morning and we all kind of try to make that call together because of where our teachers live too and, and safety of the region. But, yeah, we have, we have plenty, we have far more than that. I think when you get above three, I do think it's worthy of a conversation as far as just, you know, what are we doing? How many minutes and how many, how many instructional minutes are missed? But I feel pretty comfortable and confident with. are missed, but I feel pretty comfortable and confident with it.
And then, but we're on this, like what if there was no water at one of the elementary schools or something like that?
Yeah, so.
What, what's your thought on that, you know, as well? Like if we have a school war?
The state will actually forgive those. So when those things happen and they're not district-wide, also have this experience, gotten to appeal to DESI for lots of calendar reasons. I'm just really glad it's Andrew's, Andrew's baby now. You can actually appeal to the state when one of those things happens so you don't actually, those don't affect you in any way, shape or form. If it's a water main break, electricity and it's just one of your buildings, you can write a letter to appeal to DESI. And even if they didn't accept it, if you look our element, when it's elementary, you always have plenty of, we had actually the tornado hit that hit an Olivette, we had to close in May, one of our elementaries back a couple of years ago. And they had so many hours, it wasn't even, it wasn't on the radar, we didn't even bother sending an email to DESI because they have so many. So it just kind of depends on the school. Well, thank you for that feedback, I appreciate it. And we will be communicating that out to teachers, get some snow days back. Okay, then the last thing that I have is the Simbli agreement. As we mentioned, and we've been talking about since our board workshop this summer, we were going to look into an electronic service to provide support for our board meetings and archiving agendas and having access to all of our presentations for consistency, communication and clarity across the board. And so Tony, Kate and I learned a whole lot about a couple of different formats. One was the Board Docs, which had been bought up by Diligent Community and they had a new tool. And then the other was Simbli. And we've chosen to go with Simbli. It is actually the same platform with which our policies are housed. It has a, you can buy different parts of Simbli in modules. And so their meetings module is what we would be buying, but because we already have the policy module, it saves us a $1,000 setup fee. And it links, like we can link our policies with their documents. So it's again, streamlining the communications. They also have some other tools that once we get this up and running and under our belt, we can explore around strategic planning and tracking our strategic plan and our strategic goals. So just something else for us to, to think about. It is designed only for school boards. So it is user friendly, I think that's what Kate, Tony and I felt that it, it really felt for us. It fit our formatting and processes and we felt pretty comfortable with it. Our goal would be to roll this out in January. They were having a 40% discount if we bought it before October, which actually is good because it'll give us lead time, plenty of time to play around, to, to have it live in time for a January rollout. So we just wanted to bring that up and it is, it will, renewing it will be $3,900, but it's only $1,600 right now.
I will make a motion that we approve the Simbli agreement.
Second discussion?
So does this also automate taking board notes as well?
Thank you. Kate won't have to harass all of us because she can just send us an email to upload our documents and because we'll be live, it'll send you alerts and people can subscribe so they want alerts about what's going on. So, and then archives things for us, all of that good stuff.
We, we use that for the MSBA board of directors. Yeah, I think it works just fine.
Great, yeah. And Kate, if you like it, then that's.
That was, that was the goal we were searching for, not going to lie.
Perfect. Okay, any other discussion?
So it'll be available though on the website so other people can just, you don't need additional license.
Yeah, there's settings for private, yeah, you don't need to log in, there's a private setting and we will make the things that are supposed to be private, obviously private, and then the public facing people can, it'll just be accessible. And then if people want to sign up, I believe that was one of the features they showed us, you can sign up to get alerts when agendas are made live and things like that. So there's a couple of different ways people can access the information.
Fantastic.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are going with Simbli.
Thank you.
All right, okay. This is to our Board of Education piece and we have several policies from our policy meeting a couple of weeks ago. We could get a motion to approve, we can do those in maybe two chunks.
You want to do a chunk, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the MSBA 2024 policies, EBBC, GB, GBE. I'll stop there.
Oh, go ahead.
You want me to do?
All of them.
We'll do that through A, C, D.
Oh, boy.
Sorry, so all of those letters.
All of, okay, A through Z. GCBDA, IGBE, ILA, JFCL, and JG.
Second, any discussion on those policies?
Have you ever had to read those before?
I know, it was good, you did all of that.
Oh, really?
I was very thorough, that was a very thorough one.
I wasn't.
I always get a little cross-eyed.
I missed this one, was there anything that we had you check on or anything that had to be?
No, they were all really straightforward. The, the big one is actually the sick leave bank one that had to change because of the laws, most of them were already, they're, they're pretty minor tweaks.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. So then we'll, yes, we'll do the sick leave policy. Second.
I will make a motion to approve the MSBA sick leave bank policies as outlined.
Perfect.
Now you see, now I get it.
Second, okay, discussion. So I know we talked about the policies with you and there was an opportunity to talk to the employee staff.
Yes, now we put that in the weekend update, Debbie Stinson and Sarah Pfeifer and myself and Andrew met to talk about the sick leave bank policies. The change was that in our sick leave bank with the law that's named Pregnant Workers' Fairness Act, that if we have a sick leave bank, we must allow pregnant women to access the sick leave bank, which ours explicitly said, we did not. And so by opening it up for that, which is the change we made, we also needed to make sure that we had limitations on there to ensure the viability of the sick leave bank moving forward because more people would be able to access it. So we put a 20-day cap on the amount of days you could take out of the bank and then asked for them to be paid back at a rate of four per year instead of two per year. And again, discussed that with leadership of the NEA, we're going to, if the board approves it, we are going to work together on a joint communication to the staff to share with them the increase in their kind of benefit, to make sure they know it's there. And, yeah, but full, we have full support.
So there was one incident years back when I was on the board where we had a teacher who had an illness and teachers donated some of their days.
So you can't do that legally. So that's why we did the 20 days and that's why we actually want them to be paid back kind of faster so that people could access it again. Because technically, you're not allowed to access it until you pay them back. The other change with the law is that the board does not have to approve it, that if you get the days, you get the days, if you qualify, you qualify. The board is actually legally not supposed to approve it from, you don't need to know from a privacy standpoint and making sure that it's fair and equitable and dispersed, I guess. So if they qualify for FML, they can qualify for the sick bank. You do have to use your days first and all of that is still the same, but it's always been.
And then who is going to be in charge of keeping track of them being accounted for?
You're doing that.
I mean, I feel like we have a really good core of people, but there were times when things fell through cracks and things were not documented. And so I just want to make sure that we have, if for some reason we have a change in, in the group that we have here, that like everything is very easily picked up and accessible to move on and there's no.
Yeah, that's recorded, yes, we can do that. Processes, we need to put those, make sure that those are tight and we can share those in the weekend update. Since they don't have to go to the board for approval for the procedures to implement this, we can share this with you so you can see them.
So just for clarification, they can act, so they can still access those 20 before paying back the four, or they can't?
They can't. Well, they get the 20 first and then they have to pay them back if like two years later, I'm using maternity as an example, two or three years later, they want to access the sick leave bank again, they had to pay them back from that time before. So they can, they can do more than four days, but then we require the four days if they would want to pay back four.
Any other questions or discussion on these? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we don't need to do that in the easy one because we're going to.
Perfect. And then a delegate report, we'll, we'll have one next time.
Yeah, I got nothing new other than what I've said too much already.
Well, then we'll have some things to report after the conference.
We'll report back on the good parts of the conference and not the stuff where people do embarrassing things.
We've never been to this conference, I'm a member of this.
One of those two ladies over there.
Very great. Perfect. And then board committee update. So we, I guess we met for the community engagement, Mark and I did, met with Tony and I, with you, and so we're kind of getting started on conversations around what we'll do for community engagement and we will then have our next meeting with community members and staff members and kind of getting that larger group together in the future.
Finance committee met today, we had our very first session today, which went really well. Just talked about how finances really work in the district and getting set up for a couple of other meetings later this year.
And thanks to Amy, we just got ours on the calendar. So November 6th is when we'll do the student experience board advisory meeting, so.
We have a lot of students. Our principals couldn't narrow it down, so I'm very excited because I think there'll be some good voices there.
And for Curie and Langley, we've got a meeting date set now, right? Our hero's over there.
All right, great. Okay, and we have the conference later on this week in Kansas City. South Tech preview night is October 23rd. Our Brown High School info night is going to be very exciting and that's Thursday, November 7th at 6:30. And if any board members want to come and see how that goes this year, you're absolutely welcome. Mark and I will be going so that we can also talk about that community engagement piece afterwards and the things that I worked and I do next time. We did change our next business meeting, so it is now going to be November 12th instead of June 19th. So just mark that for your calendars. We have the staff winter break open house on Tuesday, December 17th at 3:30. That was a good time. And then a board meeting that night as well.
And then will the open house be in the polls that's coming out in November?
It's, it's.
Oh, it's like I haven't looked at it yet. I think it's.
Right, and postcards are going out.
Tony has a multi-layered communication plan, there'll be period square emails going out, there will be announcements in the newsletters and the postcard goes out.
Postcards went to the mailer today. So they'll be in, they'll be in mailboxes in the next week or so. The only thing, yeah, it's not a worry, but the United States Postal Service, because it's election time, they have to give priority to election materials. So, but we're so, we're so ahead of our timeframe that there was no concern from the mailhouse or G Bell to give in mailboxes.
Okay. Okay, if I could have a motion to adjourn and go into closed sessions.
I move that we adjourn and head to closed session.
Second. You have a little call, please.
Marson's room?
Yes.
Ryan Johnson? Ryan Quinn?
Yes.
Eve Ravenberg?
Yes.
Miss Paul? Mrs. Spencer?
Yes.
Terry Paul?
Yes. Thanks everyone for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We got out of here in an hour.
I know.
Bravo.
I told Debbie I was like, you picked a good one.
That was the longest one we had this whole year.
I asked you, but I don't think I have honors.
I know.
I'm like, I can't say it was July.
I have. I've known since July, Caitlin, it's been hard. And three was.